There you go.
And get was it?
Really love it is a gal.
Was there for a reason?
Meeting called to order, first order business, flag salute, arise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, shall we do a, do a roll call?
Yes. Commission Chair Kerr.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
There.
Commissioner Miele.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Adamson.
Here.
Commissioner Webb.
Here.
Okay, we're all present. Uh, I would ask for citizen input on non-agenda items. There is no one in the audience in the building. Do we have any questions from the general public? Non-agenda items. Uh, silence, so I will proceed. No, make note, no citizen input on non-agenda items. Uh, approval on the November twenty first meeting minutes.
Uh, here, I found a, found one here that I, I printed it off and gave it to them.
Okay, and I, and I too found a, uh, what appeared to be an error. Uh, I'll just run through them real quick. Uh, what would be on page one, under this number four citizen input on non-agenda items. Uh, major of the law, it would fall under the twenty percent requirement for a major, that would be minor variance. And to see how he knows that. So that was, I noted that. Uh, page two.
That was mine, I think.
Uh, when it came, we're about four sentences down, I will start with says city planner Jim Jacks clarifies that the property location, retail marijuana dispensary wasn't a zone change, but a time of use or time of operation change. So I wanted to throw that in there so it clarified what it was. A few sentences down from that. Again, this is just for clarification purposes. Uh, a thousand foot bump around public lands, day clerks and schools, which was the main deterrent from dispensaries being in Lafayette. Therefore, the regulations were changed to remove the one thousand foot buffer around public land and daycare, daycares leaving the one thousand foot buffer around schools. Again, that's just a, a point of clarification. Uh, moving to page three, under B, single use, the very bottom sentence. Uh, and I will start with, the next proponent is Teresa Gilbert. She states that the code doesn't clarify what attached means, and this design is ideal because there is less noise from a common wall. Since curb appeal, based on my interpretation, reckless, it, I would use the word improved curb appeal because that was the spirit of what she was getting at. And lesser cost new little firewall, that could be subjective depending, but I would put improved because that kind of described what that curb appeal might be. Uh, next paragraph. Commissioner Chair Kerr stays and is strange not to have a firewall between the homes of Teresa Gilbert state that since it isn't a large common, I would put a large common wall. And is within the garage, et cetera. So I would add, put common law as opposed to just leave common by itself. It, uh, again, description. Page four. Uh, bottom paragraph about the middle of it, note where it's a, the sentence beginning with townhouse, ends in a period. Commissioner Kerr asked for any opponents in the audience, and there are none. I would say there were past tense, again, minor clarification. Uh, very second to the last sentence. Maybe red is a bias and recommends the planning commission. I would strike the word does, but just say planning commission not answer Mayor Malcolm's questions. What does is on the other. Uh, let's go to page five. Top paragraph, uh, about four lines to the bottom. Uh, Commissioner John Miller question asking if someone removed the storage unit and closed the walls in the house, and I would say and closed the walls. Cause you're closing or closing off the two walls between them, thus creating a problem. And then the only other comments I had, and I will leave this at the discretion of you, Nicole, or Kennedy, whoever does this. Reading through us, I see a number of issues where it says, Commission Chair Ron Kerr, Commission Chair Ronald Kerr.
Just Kerr.
It, you, you, whatever's convenient for you guys, the only thing is just use, I would say consistency. If you want to use my whole name because that would be more appropriate, Ronald Kerr, that's fine. If you just want to say Commission Chair Kirk, that's fine. If you want to say Commission Chair Ron Kerr, that's fine, but whatever you choose, I don't care. I have no preference. I'm always saying throughout the document, just for consistency sake. That's it.
I think due to the amount of, um, that that's needed because I mean, it was a pretty obvious, you can see just two, two agenda items, and we have almost eight pages of notes, seven pages of notes. So we'll just make those noted. Um, we'll just make those, um, corrections and bring them back. So if nobody wants to make a motion or somebody wants to make a motion or falls flat, it's okay. We can just bring it back next month or it's up to, however you want to do it, but.
I suppose we, well, depends upon, I'll, I'll leave it up to you guys with the word, we can either make a motion, except with edits and changes. City can prepare us. Uh.
We'll move to put it on next month's agenda. There you go.
Okay, well, we'll just leave, we'll just let it roll to next month's agenda. That's easy enough. Let it roll. Okay. Uh. Next up, we have two work sessions, a housing amendments, LA twenty twenty four oh one and a floodplain overlay district FPO amendment. Yes.
There was a motion made, oh, yeah, I just need to, yeah, I guess.
Okay, you made a, you made a motion to move the meeting minute.
Okay, I will, yeah, I'll, yeah, uh, yeah, I'll move to, uh, move the item number five approval of minutes to January's meeting.
I will second that.
Okay, Nicole, uh, roll call, if you will call for.
Commission Chair Kerr.
Hi.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Hi.
Commissioner Miele.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogers.
Hi.
Commissioner Adamson.
Hi.
Commissioner Webb.
Hi.
Okay, so we'll roll the approval till next meeting since we have the motion made. Okay. Uh, work session, housing amendments, we have two of them, LA twenty twenty four oh one and floodplain overlay district FPO amendments, LA twenty twenty four oh two. Uh. Both of them are long and have a great deal of detail in them. So let me throw a thought out there. This is more for you, Jim, but also want opinion of the commission. My thought would be for both of these work sessions, perhaps starting with the markup. Since the markup contains the body of changes, and we can work our way through the markup. And then if we need to refer back to the baseline document, we could go that direction. Would you prefer to do it that way? Or would you prefer to go through it serially from to back?
Well, I was going to suggest that we start with a markup. And, uh, because long lists of things. Sometimes a person can't read it and then visualize what the language is going to be, but if you see what the language is going to be, then it's like, oh yeah, I get that right away. So I, I'm going to start with the markup part unless the commission wanted to start with any other part.
I am real.
That's page twenty three, twenty two, right?
Okay, then we'll start with the markup.
Yeah, twenty two.
Page twenty two.
Yeah, so. You know, I'm not going to go over each one of these definitions. Then they just got to point out that there are changes to definitions. There are some new definitions. There's a couple of definitions that are proposed to be deleted. And so at the bottom of page twenty two, there's a term childcare facility and it's struck out. And that's because currently the term is child daycare center. If you're going to go seventeen or more kids. And the other one is day child daycare home, if you're going to do sixteen or fewer. And the sixteen is a number, I forget. If it had been fifteen, but years ago it was twelve, you could have up to twelve kids in your home. If you're having your daycare center at your home. And then it seemed to settle went up to fifteen and now it's up to sixteen. So anyway. It's state, it's doing what they can to help daycares have more kids and allow more adults to be working. So, uh, there's some changes to these dwelling units, like dwelling multifamily, dwelling, single family dwelling, single family detached and duplex. And, uh, there's in the explanation of, I forget what bill it was, but the language basically was saying definitions of dwellings or homes or those kinds of words should not focus on families and the number of people in a family. That you could have, I, you know, a traditional married couple with fourteen kids. Yeah, okay. Well nowadays you could have a couple that's never been married, but yet they have who knows what number, maybe only one or two kids. And it might be a combination. And it might be a housing situation like you get in universities a lot. Big old houses and who knows how many people are living there, but whatever the building code allows for an occupancy is what the property owner would rent out. So if there's, you know, half a dozen bedrooms, ten, twelve bedrooms, not so many people are going to be in there.
Well, I do typically see language in college towns of like non-related people. There's a lot of controversy over these.
Yeah, or, or here, you know, up, like you say, up to the occupancy of that unit based upon how it's built. It's like the number of people that are living there that consider themselves the family units, whoever that may be, and however they put it together built, that's up to them to decide.
Yeah, and some of that is just straight out building code. You can't have fifteen people in a ten by ten bedroom.
Right.
Even if there are bunk beds on every wall.
Yeah. But the fact that there are two people that are allowed, that doesn't mean those two are related in any way. They just consider themselves the family.
But it does change a lot. The zoning historically was used to provide spaces for families, and particularly like single men and boarding hotels were segregated off the one area. So I can understand why they're taking a lot of that language out, giving this changing social dynamic.
Okay, continue, Jim. Thank you.
So, uh, at the bottom of twenty three, there's, uh, the manufactured dwelling. Uh, some amendments to that. And, uh, then there's a new definition for manufactured dwelling space. And then there's modular or prefabricated structure. That new definition is in because one of the bills that was passed said in a manufactured home park, the local government cannot prevent or prohibit a modular or, uh, uh, prefabricated structure. And, uh, but anyway. So, uh, that's about all I'm going to say, other than on the top of page twenty five is the single room occupancy definitions. And one of the, what's it, I guess thirty three ninety five, or maybe it was fifteen thirty seven in the twenty fourth session. Uh, it says, and we'll get to it, that, uh, single room occupancies have to be allowed in any zone that allows single family residential. So. Anyway, uh, the single room occupancy is kind of like your, well, I guess that term's been around quite a while, but it's like a lot of, uh, kind of the one room and you'd share a bathroom. And if it was for a longer stay thing, then you'd share a communal, uh, kitchen area. So that's what SRO was talking about. Uh, so at that point, we're getting into each of the zones, the residential acreage district RA. Just a couple of changes, uh, a simple one there for some section F, child daycare facility. And I guess that should be child daycare home versions. It's sixteen or fewer, around fewer than seventeen.
Fewer than, so child daycare home.
Yeah, and then the new L, single room occupancy. And the bill that was passed included the part about with no more than six units. So. Uh. Let's see. Need to nail, uh, now we're into the R one zone and on the next page, some of the same things, uh. The. Okay, I forgot to mention for the RA zone, it, in the list of permitted uses, the first one, A, it adds or duplex because any property in a residential zone that allows a detached, single family dwelling has to also allow a duplex now. So same thing with the R one, single family dwelling unit detached or duplex is a permitted use now.
Dumb question if I may, under A, do you use also something that have to be outright permitted where you have residential permitted? So shouldn't there be potentially under A, single perimeter detached or duplex comma? Or ADU subdivision?
Yeah, ADUs are specifically listed separately, and we've already amended the code to allow that. So, for example, uh, page twenty six where the R one zone is. There's the sub L, which is accessory dwelling unit, and it's only listed specifically or separately because we need to add the word, the phrase, the provisions of. So.
Okay, I just wanted to raise a question because I thought it might also be, it might be permitted to the RA as well, but.
Yeah, and whenever like, uh, in the limited permitted R one uses E through K, no change. And if we didn't need to add the provisions of phrase to L, L wouldn't have been separately listed. It would have been E through L, no change.
I think what you're saying is in the RA district, that's the accessory structure, accessory dwelling, you have a CD products and single room occupancy, but that's in the previous section.
Yeah, well, in the permitted uses for RA, G through K, no change.
So was the ADU in somewhere in G three?
Yeah. If ADUs aren't in there, then I will check to make sure they're added.
I only ask if we're going to clean it up and make it better, might as well do it all, aren't you?
Yeah.
Catch it all at once.
Yeah. In a way, the saving grace is we don't have any property that's sewn RA and you talk, I don't know, there was a bunch, maybe just a couple of months ago about that zone and it. Fifty years ago, when the development code was being created, it was thought that you needed kind of a holding zone. Anyway.
Just in case it comes.
So moving on, getting through the A or the, uh, R one stuff. Nothing else to mention. Turning over to page twenty seven. Uh, the duplex, that currently in our one zone have to have a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet per the bill that said that have to allow duplexes in zones that allow single family dwellings. It also said, when you allow duplex, the minimum lot size cannot be any more than the minimum lot size for a single family dwelling. So that means the duplex is around seven thousand square feet, gonna obviously look like it's a building that's filling up the lot. It'll meet the setbacks and all those things, but it'll definitely look more dense than if you had a duplex on ten thousand square feet. Or in the R two zone, I think it's, uh, eight thousand, which now is going to be down to five. But anyway. Uh. In the minimum lot area section, number six is added, single room occupancy. And the amount is seven thousand, there's three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit. And so.
What are our R one lots?
An R one lot, minimum lot size is seven thousand five hundred.
Yeah, seven thousand five hundred, so.
And then you have a duplex that's on seven thousand five hundred, and that's two units. And so where the thirty seven fifty comes from is if two units are on seven thousand five hundred. Then you can have up to six single room occupancies on seventy five hundred. That is thirty seven fifty.
But I, but I would say that there's less space required per unit in there because they're sharing some space. And then the second one was my, what I brought up before that I think this effectively precludes an SRO because we don't have any R one lots with that size, right? That with the, because you're talking about twelve thousand plus what's, which by, well, you know, like fifteen thousand square feet.
Well, all of the do, all of the subdivisions, since the code was created, have lots that are seventy five hundred square feet.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense. And if you're having two whole units, like in a duplex where I think like, maybe there's room over the square.
So what, so what, basically, so what, I think what Commissioner Webb was getting at is thirty seven square feet per dwelling unit. So if that's thirty seven fifty square feet of land.
That's just the.
Number one and number two and six. All of us, because I was looking at that same type of question. Now, how about this?
Eighteen or twenty thousand square foot lot for six units.
Correct. That, my, let me, I'll, let me rephrase the question. We don't need to discuss or answer this minute because let's go through the rest, but I would like to circle back on this and take it, since we're doing this and since we need, want to consider single room occupancy, I think it is worth at least a few minutes discussion. To make sure that not only does, that things can fit and work well, because as Commissioner Webb points out to, if you do have, let's say you go to the maximum number of six units within that, since you do have, whether it's the dining space or the bathing space or both, some of this stuff is communal. So it would be entirely possible to create a structure that would fit on an R one lot. Would blend into the characteristics of the rest of the neighborhood and could still be six rooms, single, six SRO units. It would not require thirty seven fifty square feet per dwelling unit. But it would, we would have to have some way of relating size of units, so there's some guideline so that the structure is big enough that meets legal requirements for the structure, but blends with it. And personally, I think it could be done, or maybe we'd end up with a situation where you could legally only build five units, but let's, if we're going to try to get creative, let's try to make this creativity so that it works, are you for Lafayette? Present and in the future, yes.
Are you asking to then possibly lower the required square footage per unit? Is that specifically what you're asking for?
Correct.
And I would say this is a low density residential area. While the medium, the square footage changes for the median residential area. So I could see why it was required to be a larger square foot area for a low density, an R one district.
Cause in effect, we'd end up thirty seven fifty and thirty seven.
Two thousand five hundred square feet.
Yeah, so we'd end up with a situation within that R one district, you could effectively build nothing larger than two rooms or nothing larger than a duplex. And that totally undermines.
Minimum of four.
And it, and if it's a minimum, that totally undermines the purpose or intent behind the SRO.
It's a minimum of a half acre.
Yeah, so the idea, the idea is to, would be to make it so that, okay, if we want to keep it low density, then let's set our square footage requirements such that you could put those four units in an R one district, it would be in a structure that would, to the outside, to all outward appearances, would appear to be a house that would completely complement the neighborhood, but still meet the spirit of the law behind the SRO.
Not, yeah, and I would like to raise, you know, the spirit is very much so, like, this was made during the homeless crisis. And I know they cleaned up a lot of it because they can enforce camping ordinances now, but these people are still here.
They're still, they're still, they're still outside.
To get them inside. A single room occupancy is the lowest barrier housing option we have to get people off the street and indoors. And so I, I, for one personally, would like to see us to the greatest degree possible, implement the spirit of the law with the letter that we can, you know, with the space that we have to work with.
Could part of that square footage requirement be taken into account for parking spaces?
I do, yeah, I do agree. You know, when you have the smaller space, but parking is a valid concern.
It's not in here about parking. You can't require onsite parking for that. So. The spirit of SRO residential one is low density.
Right, but the spirit of law was intentionally to cause us to increase the density.
Increase the density. So even though it's low density, we're stuck with this concept of, yeah, it might be low density. But state guidelines are pushing, you know, it's like the concept of a low density lot being a single family detached house. That's law. Those days are gone. At a minimum, every lot is going to have two legal living structures on it, whether it's a duplex or a house with an ADU. You can't get away from that at this point anymore. So.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I think we're basically looking at a six bedroom home. Being turned into a common area of, of, and.
Probably not even like a home because they'll construct it as expensively as possible, and it will look more like a six unit apartment. Like it's a sixplex, but they won't need bathroom and kitchen for every unit. So very likely there'll be six units and then wherever.
But it would still have to meet.
Only a kitchen or bathroom facilities.
To, now, the room is about four hundred square feet, about thirty eight of that is bathroom. Yeah, yeah, I, I, in a college town, this was very common to take existing houses and turn them into SROs with common space. So it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to turn them into de facto apartments. I've seen them very much.
Build a structure, they would have to meet design, Lafayette's design code that exists. So whether it's a box that's got four people, let's just say it's a four unit, whether it's a box with four people in it or a box with a family. Those boxes are going to be dictated by both costs, what the market will pay and what meeting the minimum de, design requirements the city has.
Right, and in college towns where big old houses were turned into effectively SROs. We here in Lafayette don't typically have big old houses. There's a few, but very few. And so SROs will likely be a brand new building that look somewhat like a barracks. And because it's six units, it doesn't have to comply with the single family design standards. It complies with the multifamily standards, multifamilies, three or more units. And we don't have any architectural standards for apartments. We have setbacks and things. Also for SROs, you can re, it is, the law allows parking accessory dwelling units. No, you can't, but these are accessory dwelling units, they're SROs. So however the people are going to get to them, a lot of folks have some kind of vehicle. They're often not operating well. It could be even an RV. So, uh, the multifamily requirement for parking, it's one and a half spaces per unit. Uh, we may want to drop that to one space per unit for an SRO. I don't know.
Yeah, it makes sense because there's typically only going to be one person living in it, unlike a duplex. Yeah, it makes sense because there's typically only gonna be one person living in it, unlike a duplex, which is probably gonna have more. And then, you know, I might also reiterate, you know, we may not have control over the design standards as much of the SROs. But, you know, the tents don't look any better.
So like I said, just something I wanted to bring up to, for, for thought for everybody. Cause we're, if we're gonna think about it, it's like, let's, if we're gonna create something, let's create something good. Unless the desire is to, uh, when I say do the minimum, I, I don't mean that in a, I don't mean that in a criticizing way. I wanna do what's good for Lafayette both now and the future. If somebody else in the future wants to change it, I suppose we can also leave it from, you know, look at it from that perspective. Let some future group decide that they want to change square footage for dwelling unit, but.
I would like to do everything we can within the powers of the commission to relieve human misery. And I mean, people living outside in the middle of a winter is the peak of human misery. Anything that we can do within the spirit of the law, the task we've been given to help alleviate human misery.
Like, like I say, I would, I would like to leave that thought on the table for the moment. Let's go through the rest of this and look at the R two and look at some of the other ones and see how SROs fit there. Maybe we circle back and take and have a ten minute, have a ten minute discussion about it.
Well, we could, you know, for something to keep in the back of your mind until we come back to it. A single room occupancy could have a minimum lot size of seventy five hundred square feet. That's would be up to a six unit. And then depending on what we do with the parking and so forth. And if it's a two unit, a two story, uh, you know. The more you go up, the more space you have for parking and that guy.
Okay, would you put this on the agenda or make a specific session?
We still can have, you know, it would still have to have, there are certain setbacks that we still have to maintain. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have minimum, you have yard setbacks within the R one. Even though it's an SRO, I would expect that SRO to be subjected to the same setbacks of the underlying zone.
I believe so. Yeah, I believe that's gonna be the same.
As opposed to all of a sudden, hey, we're gonna say it's an SRO, but we're gonna treat it as a multifamily. And try to park, in other words, let's not park a multifamily, multifamily laws in an R one zone. Then I would, then I, then I agree with Commissioner Mioli of kinda staying where we're at to discourage it. Unless we can sit down and say, we'll have SROs, we'll let them exist in an R one or R two, whatever the zone is. So long as that structure, what's going on adheres as much as we can legally say with the underlying zone. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of points and as, as I was reading earlier, maybe, you know, we all, we have ideas and wanna discuss it. Can we set it as an agenda item for a future meeting and set ourselves aside time to discuss this?
I think what we want, what we wanna do is complete the work session with the idea that we complete. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we wanna complete the work session with the idea that this is going to move forward and be, and ultimately go into the LZDO.
Consistent with what I've mentioned at prior meetings, we have a public hearing on these housing amendments next month on January sixteenth.
Okay.
So let's move forward. Um, whatever, rest on page twenty seven or not significant items. Page twenty eight, uh, the bottom half of twenty eight has a bunch of language deleted due to a bill that's changed. But the change, the change to bill that caused us to put this language in the code in the first place.
And then we use it again.
So then we get to R two. And so, uh, R two, uh, doesn't have a lot of significant changes. For example, duplex has been allowed in R two already. And then, uh, the multifamily having, I am on sub E in kind of the middle of the page. Like multifamily housing, including apartments, townhouses of three or more units and condominiums, subject to the provisions of site development review. Uh, accessory structures, uh, just for all of these zones, the accessory structure standards are in section two point two oh nine point ten. But yet, in some of this R two and RC zone language, it says, it has a section that says accessory structure shall have setbacks of this and building height of that. Well, all that's covered in two two oh nine. And so some of this is to take those kinds of inconsistencies.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to pull us back into this again, but, uh, the, uh, item number six under, under minimum lot area. It's listed your single.
What page are you on?
On page thirty.
Okay.
Uh, first three units are nine thousand, requires a nine thousand square foot minimum lot area. And then each additional unit requires another two. So, uh, six would be a fifteen thousand
Yeah.
Square foot lot.
For those things with, like, for example, when an item is specifically mentioned duplex at five thousand square feet. Well, that's a bad example. Uh, and we don't have in any of the existing, let alone the amendments for the, uh, townhouses. They have a four thousand square foot minimum lot size. And that's in, you know, single family dwelling attached four thousand. So if you have two of them, then each lot would have four thousand square feet. If you have three, then each lot would be four thousand. And so with that specific mention of townhouses having four thousand square feet, that overrides the multifamily dwelling. Where the first three units is nine thousand square feet. So that's why I didn't specifically call out, even though a three unit townhouse is multifamily. Then that would go through site development review because it's generally a two, sometimes three story structure. And there are three of them attached. It can be a big bulk mass kind of a structure to go through site development review. So if we're wanting to have smaller minimum lot sizes, then we can do that. And we just would need to more specifically say what we want for each kind of housing.
And as Commissioner Adams said, it indicated on the multi found in the first three units. That's nine thousand, or nine thousand square feet lot size. But that's for all three units together. So it would be roughly three thousand square foot lot size. Available or for each individual unit. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, page twenty nine where it has him, you know, right in the middle, uh, subsection E. And it's townhouses of three or more units. We could, instead of considering townhouses, three or more units as multifamily have to go through site development review. We could say, well, yeah, but each townhouse is on its own lot. So even if we have five, seven in a row, each is on its own lot. And if we call that single family, then it would have to comply with our single family architectural standards. So we can clarify that that is the way we want it, rather than the way it's written here. Where townhouses of three or four more, three or more units is multifamily. Oh, and then multifamily has to go through site development review.
So, and instead of using the word, like you said, instead of using the word townhouse, it would be like, you know, the last, last month's meeting where instead of townhouse, it was a common wall.
Yeah, I was in the last week when we decided that townhouses can have only a four foot common wall.
And that did open, yeah, okay, so.
Now your question two on Quebec and Sierra, is this a duplicate or am I misunderstanding why there's two single room occupancy?
Um, so we're on page twenty nine.
Yeah, Q and S, we have, yeah, Q and S on section, or page twenty nine. And we have single room occupancy, subject to provisions of, and then we have S with single room occupancy with no more than six units. Just curious, but that's in two seconds, sir.
Okay, so Q, single room occupancy. So, yeah, subject to, and then what?
And S is single room occupancy with no more than six units.
Yeah, well, we don't need that quite as doing.
Yeah, because I guess doesn't, isn't the six units implicit in section two dot three nineteen or something like that?
Yeah, I'll take a look at this and get it squared away. We don't even say.
Sure, well, that's why I was wondering if there's a reason or is it, you know, duplication?
Or maybe it's just duplicated to make things a little clearer for some, so that could be that way too.
Either way, I fessed up that this wasn't a duplication for any particular reason. It's more like it was a duplication due to an error.
Either way, just so long as R one and R two are consistent, that's, I guess.
In the R one category, the, the minimum lot size for a six unit SRO is twenty two thousand five hundred square feet.
Okay, yeah, if that's what six times thirty seven fifty is.
Yeah.
But then in R, it's fifteen thousand square feet.
Right.
Cause it's the same six units.
Yeah, cause R two is higher density.
Nine thousand plus two.
Okay, nothing else for two.
I mean, we'll get there to you on R two and this and R one, the changes, but it seems like the SRO thing and putting it in specifically in R one is that tell us to increase the density, what would you put them?
Increase the density, yes, but you're already doing it down to thirty seven fifty, which is already more dense than a seventy five hundred.
I thought it was the same as the, as the duplex. And that's what I was saying, it's like, it looks like it's seventy five hundred square feet. It looks like you have the same size requirements for like units as if you have a duplex, as if you're just adding another bedroom. And that's where, you know, cause it's like if the duplex is, you know, seventy five hundred square feet and it's, you know, yeah. It seems like, it, it seems like you're, you're requiring more space for the people living in the SRO than the people living in the duplex. Uh, cause we're not adding on a whole note, a whole of the house, we're just adding on a locked bedroom. When you, when you have a, you know, duplex in this, in this square footage of the dwelling unit, you'd have a garage. Yeah, single car, double car garage.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
And then the footprint would be, the footprint would be maybe the same footprint for both that you're, you're more dense in an occupancy.
So here's, here, here's a thought with, with respect to R one, where we've just got single room occupancy, which was limited to two units. Looking at what's in R two and kind of, let's follow, following a similar theme. Let's now, so a single room occupancy, the first three units would be six thousand square feet, right? Each additional unit would be fifteen hundred square feet. So now you've set a standard where if someone wants to build an SRO with three units, that's fine.
But it's not a lot, cause it's always something four, yeah.
It, it, oh, oh, uh.
To be an SRO, it has to be four.
Okay, has, so for the first three units, it'd be six thousand square feet. Each additional unit would be fifteen hundred square feet. Now, you have, if somebody wants to use that seventy five hundred square foot lot, six thousand, they built one more unit. There are seventy five hundred square feet. Now you can put that four unit SRO on. That keeps the density of the SRO down and still within structure. Or maybe we say the first, uh, first two units are X and each additional unit is Y. Again, such that.
It's a people of seventy five hundred.
Yeah, you, you, you hold the density to four units.
That, that makes, that makes more sense.
So it stays within the intent of the law, keeps the density down in an R one district. Does not, but does not completely exclude them. But then we also have to make sure that whatever we use for the SRO structure itself, that it can still comply with. Well, it'll have to comply with building codes, that's a separate issue. But whatever we can do in terms of having it comply with city design standards. Uh, parking, so that it, so that, cause if things can fit within an R two, which is higher density, it should still be able to fit within R one with a little lower density, but still is gonna up the density in some way. And then it becomes more like, you know, a large five bedroom home that does exist in Lafayette could find itself turned into a three room SRO. Because it doesn't mean that even though, uh, aren't allowed a minimum of four. If you're building it new, I don't think that the law would say, oh, if you're only gonna go with three, you can do that. And I don't see that as, either that or they would still have the space to go to four. So.
But this all be brought up again in January?
No, it's, it's like we're getting to a public comment, public hearings. Row by then, that's where we're kinda, that's where I'm struggling, cause I don't feel like we're fully implementing the spirit here. But then we're kind of rushed because now we have, we don't have time to take up this discussion next month and then move forward in our schedule.
But we can still propose, we can still propose something that does follow it. And then at the public hearing, if we find out that from a public hearing standpoint, even though it might make sense to have something in there, we might have to change it to effectively take it out because of citizen input, so long as we still follow the law.
Yeah, I mean, a simply, a simple solution in R one would be to have the minimum lot size for an SRO, seven thousand five hundred square feet. That's the same as a single family dwelling. And we wouldn't need to go through any of the calculations or anything like that.
I kinda like that.
Whether it's a two unit, three unit, four, five, six unit SRO, seventy five hundred square feet.
That's for.
And instead would be the starting point. And then if they needed more land for parking or something, then they would need to have a lot larger than just the seventy five hundred square feet.
Unless the parking situation could be solved within the existing.
Yeah.
Footrest of that, because you, you have to have a certain amount of parking now anyhow, so.
Yeah, like in single family dwelling in the R one district, you need seventy five hundred square feet. Most homes with couple parking spaces can fit on that lot. But some people want a bigger home. And if they want a bigger home, then it's gonna take up more space. And it might take up so much space that there wouldn't be a room, enough room for even two cars. So they have to say, well, our seventy five hundred square foot lot's not big enough. We'll have to buy an eight thousand or a ten thousand square foot lot to get our big house with even just.
But I, I, I do know that, what is it, code does require Lafayette does require, for like parking within an R one, you have to have. It can be attached or detached, it can be a garage or a carport, but you have a minimum parking standard that you have to meet.
Yeah, two spaces.
Two spaces.
And that does not include any curb, we don't include any curb.
No, 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 it has to be, it has to be on the lot.
Yeah.
And I believe, and I believe on the lot, it either has to be carports, garage or attached garage. It just can't be two spaces sitting out front of the house.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that, that we, we limit the, the SRO in an R one to four units on seventy five hundred square feet. And then additional square footage for additional units to six. That's a good compromise, you know, it, it, it's up for you to everybody and then leaves the.
Is that, is that okay with the state guidance or do we have to follow like the state language?
I've not wanted to read this, but the state, the bill that was passed regarding density says, uh, with the number of units consistent, well, it's precedes that by saying you have to allow an SRO up to six units on each lot or parcel. Zone to allow for the development of a detached, single family dwelling. So these SROs, we have to allow them to have six units.
So then that almost.
And then the density is with the number of units consistent with the density standards of a lot zoned to allow for the development of residential dwellings with five or more units. Well, five or more units, that's like a fiveplex, an apartment. And so if you look in the R one zone, it doesn't allow apartments at all.
Right.
So it doesn't have any minimum lot size for apartments. But if you do. Um. Uh, if you're looking for the density standards of a lot or parcels zoned. To allow for the development of residential dwellings. Okay, even though we're thinking R one zone, we're gonna look at R two where apartments are allowed. And for five apartment units. Nine thousand for the first three. And for each additional unit, two thousand square feet more. So ninety thousand plus six thousand to get six SRO units is. But fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size. But. I'm aware that some cities. Similar to the duplex where you're required to have a allow a duplex. And you don't get to make it a little bigger lot because it's two units. You have to use the minimum lot size that goes with a single family dwelling. So they would say in R one. Seven thousand five hundred square feet, and if you have a six unit SRO. So be it, the state law requires it. And let the neighbors. Decide whether they want to stay or sell out and go somewhere else.
So maybe so wait, so so your your interpretation would be. Single room occupants. Six units. Seventy five hundred square feet. Uh, R two would be single room, six thousand would be.
Fifteen thousand square feet.
But the R two, we haven't quite gotten to it, but the R two zone. The minimum lot size on page thirty.
Yep, nine thousand to each plus two.
Nine thousand.
It's nine thousand for the first three units and two thousand square feet for each additional unit. If we use that in R one. Then we'd have six units with a minimum lot side and six SRO units with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. Or we could just say. We're not going to worry about doing any calculations or anything, we're just gonna in R one, the minimum lot size is seventy five hundred. If you're gonna do a SRO of any number of units. Your minimum lot size is seventy five hundred square feet.
And I mean, these are fundamentally different than apartments, you know, like, you know, these are, they're 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 really small, like, you know, they're taking up. Hundred square feet of house maybe that they're that they're living in, so it's it's just it. It it doesn't make sense in my mind to apply the same standards we would to apartments or duplexes to SROs because the people who live in them are different, there's always gonna be one person, maximum two. An SRO, but SRO, SRO, single, it's a single room occupancy, you got, you got one room, so it makes sense that the sizes be smaller, right?
Except the the six room house. Six bedroom house. You're talking about one unit. You're you're looking at at anywhere from from. Twenty six to three thousand, twenty six hundred to the three thousand square feet.
Yeah.
I would I would almost be pretty positive, we're not gonna see an SRO. Coming to Lafayette, I'm 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 not saying that we wouldn't allow it, I'm just saying we were in suburbia, people want. Three twos, I don't, I don't really see much of an SRO thing, so I know we're beating our heads on this a lot, but I, if we see one of these in the next three or four or five years, I would probably be shocked.
I I would have if you had seen any inquiry. In putting an SRO.
I would.
Building in. And do we even have the lots available? To put.
Well, that's where we're getting at is we don't, like with the size that we have here, we know we don't want an inventory of lots. One loss that just just on on Bridge Street was an acre.
Yeah, with the six with the six units.
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen circle.
Yeah, so I'm thinking on Bridge Street and I'm not sure how many other streets, but I think Jackson Street in the first block of Jackson Street. But. That is an older, bigger house, and I mentioned the value is up enough that it would not make someone think. I'm gonna buy that and turn it into an SRO. But on Bridge Street, there's a couple of bigger, older. Deferred exhibiting deferred maintenance homes that someone from Portland could be interested in. They could buy it and they'd say, okay, I'm turning this into an SRO. And. And just because the building is already there. And the size of the lot is whatever it is, it's already there. We could say. You need seventy five hundred square feet for a six unit SRO. So you shouldn't buy this. House on this lot. Because the lot's not big enough. For a single family dwelling, let alone a six unit SRO. And.
We we can't, we can't establish it as a an SRO is the four units. To a maximum of six units. So the basic, the base of a of an SRO would be four units. Four units would be seventy five hundred, two thousand for each additional.
Well, we could. Try anything that we can think of and get consensus on. But with an older home on Bridge Street exhibiting deferred maintenance, somebody buys it for a mere, I don't know, two hundred thousand or something. And the yard is all decrepit and there's a few junk cars maybe. And so it's two hundred, two fifty. And they say, well, I could turn that into a six unit SRO. And the city says, well, no, you couldn't because the lot's only sixty five hundred square feet, it's not seven thousand five hundred, which is the minimum lot size in R one. And I don't know, I don't remember if there's only up there on Bridges R one or what, but at least for an example.
Where's our map?
In R one. Whatever it might be. We've been, I want to say, we need seventy five hundred square feet if you're going to increase the density.
Yeah.
Similarly. Someone would not be able to buy that and say. I'm gonna turn this house into a triplex. It's a big enough, old enough house, I could get three separate apartment units in. Like we say, well, if you're gonna do apartments. Then they're not. Uh, then they're going to be nine thousand square feet for the first three units, your lot's only six thousand or something. So.
And one of the other thing I think there's some talk of like, what would an investor want to come in and do, when you look at something like this, this deliberately there to alleviate homelessness, it could well be a nonprofit, it could be somebody coming in not caring about money, just trying to house. Not necessarily just thinking like, hey, would somebody want to take this and turn it, they may have value for property.
Again, going. Going back, the the most straightforward. Standard would be seventy five hundred square feet for an SRO. We wouldn't have to worry about. Anything other than. It's the lot seventy five hundred square feet, if it isn't, you cannot do an SRO, it's not. But if it is.
And it seems like a better compromise because there's less lots that are gonna be R one under that size, they're gonna be excluded than lots that would be excluded by this math here of all these. Like it seems like. Leave more inventory on, and like you said, I don't think there's gonna be a million of these popping up, so I don't think it's gonna wholly change the character of the city, but if it gets a few people off the street, then.
But it has the potential to change the character of the city.
But when when it comes to the SRO, the law says we have it has to that, we have to wow, and so with a minimum of four. But up to six. Correct?
Well, let's see, what did the definition of? Single room occupancy, residential development with no fewer than four attached units. And then. That's out of the deck convention. When you read the.
Yeah.
The bill about. It says with up, excuse me, with up to six units on each lot. So I guess it would be. You gotta have four, but no more than six.
But we could use it as the four as the as the basis of.
So I, that's why I say. That's why I'm thinking is like. In R one, the first four units, seventy five hundred feet, that that is, and then make each additional unit fifteen hundred feet, so. Oh, it's a seven five square foot, I want to build SRO, you're stuck with four units, lots, yet there is. An R one lot that is. Forty seventy five, nine thousand square feet. Happens to be that like, hey. You could put a five unit on there if. You were so inclined. That.
Yep.
Meets the render, that meets the requirements of a state law that says, hey, it's a residential zone, you gotta allow SROs, and by the way, very early. Minimum four. You can, you can provide guidance of the ma- not maximum, but minimum four.
Yeah, I I like that, I mean, if you guys, if we can build some consensus around that number, I I would be more satisfied with that than what we'd be putting forward, that we've got.
So the additional, the first four would be seven five hundred, and then how many more square feet for one?
I was just saying, he's suggesting, I just picked a number of fifteen hundred.
Oh, okay.
But you got two thousand makes it consistent with the number two code.
Or we could, or we could tweak the R two code just a little bit.
Lower dense in the R two.
Yep.
I'll say it again and again and again.
Yes, no, no, I I agree with you. I'm I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to thread that needle of keeping the density down, but still we have to follow what the state is.
It's not a compromise if you make the additional the same in both densities.
Just make sure the commissioner mules.
Okay, I should I should just say.
Twenty five hundred for.
Or we or we make it so that each additional is two thousand in the R one and each additional in the R two fifteen hundred.
Then you go down fifteen.
Okay.
See, that would make more sense.
That makes more sense.
That makes logical sense, yes.
So if you're really like, oh.
R one? I'll answer, you got, I mean, you're you're on, you're on that side of the business, I mean, do you see, do you see any issues with any of that?
No, seems to make sense to me, I agree with you, I don't see that there's a lot of motivation for a developer to come into Lafayette to build any of these, and I would also be very surprised if we saw one in the next three to five years.
And if we really, and if we really wanted to try to make it consistent. On the R two, we could say for that single room occupancy, the first three units would be.
The first four units.
First, first four, you'd make it first four units. And instead of nine thousand square feet, make the first four, cause it's a single, it's a single room occupancy, not multifamily. Make the first four units, five thousand square feet.
I think it was going one way, but then.
Be square, and then each additional, you know, be two thousand square feet, so if you happen to have a seven thousand square foot lot in an R two zone that. Isn't going to meet an R one, no matter what, but you happen to have it available. Hey, someone could put a five unit SRO there, so that's. We meet the requirements of allowing four units, it satisfies the. Underlying lot, but we do leave the opportunity there so that if someone would want to go to a higher unit count, they could.
And so for the R one, it was four units.
Seventy five hundred.
Five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
And then each of the unit number five and six would need.
An additional, uh.
Two thousand.
Two thousand square feet.
And then in the R on two.
We'd have first four units.
Five thousand.
And each additional would be fifteen hundred.
There, that makes a lot more sense. You are awesome.
Uh, it's not me, guys. It's Jim. It's all of you. It's me only, it's Webb, it's Building, it's Roger, so.
It's distractible.
It's not just me, I, all I do is I take a list of things and start. Okay. So.
On page thirty. Or twenty nine, sorry.
We're on page thirty.
Yeah.
We've got our numbers for SROs, read it out, the community, the the public will be able to comment on them.
Yep.
We will have to make sure that. Design code and standards can be legally applied to SROs in such a way as that, again, we have some insisting, but that's not here in this document. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, on page in the R two zone, moving on from the single room occupancy, minimum lot size, page thirty one. Uh, kind of a third of the way down, it talks about accessory structures for detached, single family. Attached, single family townhouses and duplex development shall comply with section two point two oh nine. So that's where we add in the specific reference that for accessory structures, they look to two point two oh nine. And then number three is for principal and accessory structures for multifamily. On a property which abuts an R one, R two, or RC district. Occupied by a single family dwelling. Attached, single family dwelling or duplex. Here's the setbacks. And the setbacks are a little bigger, almost the same, but just a little bigger than. The setbacks for like a single family dwelling in R two. And it's. Getting at the issue of. We have so many properties, I mean, we have very few uh vacant, single family dwelling lots. In R one or R two. And so if you have somebody that's maybe in R two and they've been there for thirty years on their property, but the property next door is four or five acres, it's R two, it can have apartments. Instead of having that apartment building. Like now. With a setback of, I'd setback of five feet. Well, okay, maybe. Well, a side or a rear setback. Of five feet or ten feet or something small like that. All of these setbacks are twenty feet. Except if it's a side yard adjacent to a street. And then it's fifteen feet. So that.
I think we talked about that for fire access and being able to get around the buildings.
Well, yeah, there is, it's. Uh, setbacks are not so much for fire access, cause in the fire code, it has its own minimum, but minimum, but it's only something like five feet. Uh, maybe even three feet. Anyway. This is mainly to just get some separation from, say, a three story apartment. Coming in on a property that's, I don't know, four or five acres. And then right next to it is several. Single family dwellings in an R two zone and. They're looking at an apartment, three story apartment that's ten feet from the property line. If you move it back to twenty, then that's still a pretty. Major difference once the apartment building is built. But at least it's not just ten feet away where you're having to crane your head up and. Wonder, okay, where am I gonna move to?
I know there's concerns about shadows and some jurisdictions too, especially from our south, like how much sun you should get on your property.
Here's another dumb question when it comes to accessory structures for. We're opening up this possibility of an SRO type structure. But there's no indication in here how accessory structures might relate to an SRO type. Structure. Should there be a reference of some kind?
Well, I would say because multifamily is three or more units. And an SRO that has three or more unit, well, yeah, at least four units. Then they would fall under this category.
Okay. Okay.
And I kind of doubt that an SRO development is gonna have any accessory structure.
Unless somebody wanted to build a small shed that would allow for someone to have a. Three foot by a six foot storage locker.
Well, you talk accessory, oh, accessory structure.
Yeah, accessory structure is something that like, it's like a storage shed, you know, the accessory structure.
Yep.
So.
And four is for principal and accessory structures for multifamily development on a property which does not abut the R one, R two, or RC. So.
Okay, so then we're figuring the SRO will follow the multifamily guidelines. Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the RC, uh. The same kinds of issues that we've already talked about. Because we're having to add the same sorts of things, we already, we already allow duplex in the RC zone, we already allow apartments in the RC zone. So. There's a lot of the same stuff going on. The bottom of page thirty five, the minimum lot size for a single room occupancy. We do, but we just reach consensus on.
First four units would be the five thousand square feet, yeah.
Yeah, the huge is. SROs are not listed twice in the listed permitted unitisms. I'm gonna be looking at that. Uh. So anyway, then also the same thing with setbacks. Uh, currently in our code right now. If you're in an R two zone and you're gonna do a single family dwelling, you've got. You know, the setbacks. On the property next door in an R two zone, if you're doing a ten unit apartment with three stories high, you have the same setback, so the idea again is to have apartments with greater setback. the idea again is to have apartments with greater setback. Um, the next thing then is kind of jumping ahead a bit, page thirty-nine, it's in the C one zone. And this is from one of the bills, I guess it was in the twenty-fourth motion. Uh, it's talking of, the bill talks about in a commercial district, a city can allow apartments just straight out of apartments in a commercial zone. And because we here have our dark red and then a little one property that's pink, the C one and C two, uh, we don't have a lot of commercial land to accommodate future demands. Because we're getting up close to five thousand people, with that number of people, then commercial folks start paying attention. And so, well, for example, I guess both of the little grocery stores are being remodeled now. And that isn't, that isn't being done without some thought of, oh, Lafayette almost has five thousand people, we better spruce up so we can compete against each other. I don't know if separate ownerships of those two, uh, small groceries, but anyway, they're doing what they can to spruce up and attract more customers. But in the C one zone, the bill says, yeah, you can just allow apartments outright. And I'm not proposing that because we don't have that much commercial land. And I don't know where we're going to get any more as we go from five thousand to six and seven thousand people. And even if we have some single family dwelling on one of the lots in the C one, it's going to be a smaller lot, maybe eight thousand square feet. So if somebody's for a commercial use, is going to have to buy two or three or four lots, maybe get the whole block to do a commercial development of any reasonable size, something that's going to fit the market and be big enough to generate enough revenue.
Well, we have.
Be successful.
We have traffic issues on ninety-nine too. I was trying to give an apartment complex and people trying to get in and out of there for work with the traffic nightmare on ninety-nine the way it is right now.
Yeah.
Practically.
So the other option in the bill was you can, you have to allow either just straight out apartments or a mix, or you have commercial on the first floor with residential above. We already allow that, but in this particular bill, it has some requirements that we can allow what we already allow, but uh, and just to read it, mixed use with ground floor, commercial, upper floor, uh, residential, subject to an affordable housing covenant. So that's what makes this a little different than what we're already allowing. Right now, if somebody wanted to do first floor, commercial, upper floor, uh, residential, it would not have to be affordable housing. And there's definitions of what affordable housing is in the bill. And so for this particular mixed use in C one, you'd have to have a covenant as provided for in ORS making the property affordable to moderate income households as defined in ORS. And then there's some things here that with that covenant, I think it's a sixty-year covenant. Anyway, uh, for a long, long time, somebody would have to monitor and make sure that the rent levels in those apartments are not exceeding the affordable housing, the, the moderate income level in Yamhill County. I don't know what that is.
Eighty percent of the AMI or something like that?
Yeah, something like that. Anyway, so.
You would have to do that or the state's taking on that report?
No, the state's not doing that. And if the city allowed one of these, then you know, within two or three years, the mixed-use structure owner would be worrying about how much rent they're going to charge. They'd be increasing it and they would leave it up to the people living there to squawk and then have to probably hire an attorney to say, let's go to court. The covenant is being violated. So anyway, for these mixed-use, moderate income projects, the, uh, proposed development on the property cannot be adequately served, but you don't have to allow a mixed-use, moderate income on a property where the development on the property cannot adequately be served by sewer water storm drainage or streets. And you don't have to allow the mixed project if the property contains a steep slope. You don't have to allow it if it's in the special flood hazard area. You don't have to allow it if it's constrained by land use regulations based on statewide planning goals, natural disasters or hazards, that's goal seven. Or natural resources, including air, water, land, and natural, uh, and natural areas. If it's natural areas, it's goal five. If it's the quality of air, land, and water, it's goal, uh, six, I guess. And if the property's vacant, you don't have to allow one of these. And then if the property was added to the urban growth boundary within the last fifteen years, you don't have to allow one of these on those properties. So, uh, that's what it says, and we'll see if we get any mixed-use projects where the developer wants to have a decades-long covenant limiting the rent so that a person of moderate income could afford to rent there. Um, what else? We're jumping from C one to section two point three, which is supplemental standards for special uses. We have a C one zone, there's even a property that has that so on it. And one of the things in the bill is you don't have to allow this mixed-use uh, how, mixed-use housing, commercial for moderate income households in a commercial zone that allows industrial uses. In our C two district, uh, it does allow a couple of industrial type uses. So in these proposed amendments, there is nothing proposing mixed residential, commercial in the C two zone. Because that someone has intended a couple of industrial uses. So, uh, the supplemental standards for special uses, uh, the main special use that the amendments deal with is manufactured homes, and because you can have modular and prefabricated structures and a mobile home part now, then it, that's added. And at the bottom of page forty, a manufactured dwelling should not be installed on a property in a residential zone abutting of property with a structure listed in the potentially the law says you can't allow manufactured housing on a property that abuts a property that has, that is designated as a historic resource. So as far as I know, the city's inventory of historic resources was done because that's what goal five required. And then when the city was acknowledged as being consistent complying with goal five, there was no none of the inventory historic, possible historic properties or buildings or structures were designated as historic. So, uh, there's a couple of buildings that could have been, I guess, but they weren't. And so uh, this is just clarifying that a manufactured dwelling shall not be installed on a property that's designated. You never know, we might have a house that hasn't or that wasn't designated in the first go-around. And if we take a look at inventory, potential historic houses again, we might designate some. And then this new provision would not allow a manufactured dwelling to go in next to them.
Now, if one was there and then the place is designated, then it would just fall into a non-conforming use and be allowed to stay.
It can still stay.
Yep.
Uh, so anyway. Yeah, then to the next couple of pages is not critical. Uh, the next section, the applications for type one, type two, type three. Uh, due to, instead of bill fifteen thirty-seven, uh, property line adjustments are no longer fitting in our type one A, so taking them out of that and putting them in the type one C, which is, uh, limited land use. Excuse me. So then the top of page forty-three, the type C, which is a category called limited land use decisions. We're having to add a partition replat because that's what the bill says is now a limited land use. Subdivisions and subdivision replats are limited land use decisions. Site development review is a limited land use. And then the extension, alteration, or expansion of a non-conforming use is a limited land use. And the other part of that limited land use thing is it's a staff decision. And in our type one C, type one, that's where the city administrator is the decision authority. So it's not a matter of the planning commission having decided partitions and property line adjustments in the past and not now being able to, but you used to decide subdivisions. Now it will be, uh, Brandon's responsibility as the decision authority. And for example, the extension, alteration, or expansion of a non-conforming use, Lafayette Auto Body, where the planning commission held a hearing and allowed a, what was it, seven hundred and sixty square foot area that is where the non-conforming automobile vehicle repair could occur. The commission said, yep, you can expand that up to forty-two hundred square feet. And so that kind of a application would be city administrator's decision.
Now, they would, uh, they're all appealable to us. They don't, they don't like what the city administrator did that it was coming out of.
Right.
That one was approved, but it's still going to be done anything like that.
They've got, they got, you won your extension. So they, they said that the hearing, they were waiting on contract and review and administrative work to go through. So that was the reason.
And that one here, extension expires June, uh, February sixth, twenty twenty-five. And the most recent outcome of discussions with the applicant and his development team is, uh, the applicant has decided to apply for a zone change. To change both the eight thousand square foot areas that he bought and consolidated. He's having an issue with where in his building he would have his showroom and retail auto parts. He, uh, in prior site plans, including the one that was approved in site development review, the uh, showroom was at the corner of Fourth and Adams. There was a door for the showroom facing Adams, but no parking at all. The building had to be with its forty-two hundred square feet of non-conforming use. It had to be on that eight thousand square foot corner. It couldn't drift over farther west to the other lot that he owns. And so parking was over there, but now he is of the opinion that because the auto showroom and auto parts is where it is in the bu- building between the building and Adam Street, instead of a five-foot setback, he needs parking. Well, that means the building would have to be moved up as much as twenty or twenty-five feet to the west. And that would put half the building in the R, uh, C one zone. And that can't happen because the C one zone does not allow auto or vehicle repair. So, uh, kind of as a, without talking to the city that I'm aware of anyway. Uh, we let him know that, well, an option, kind of a big deal option, would be to just request that your two former eight thousand square foot lots that have now been consolidated into one sixteen thousand square foot lot, just apply for a zone change, go for a C two. And so, uh, the application's been deemed incomplete and he's been on vacation for three weeks anyway, so uh, we'll see what the response is to the incomplete letter. And from there, whatever that response is, we'll do whatever the next appropriate step is. But it would, if it, if he continues on with it, then it would come to the planning commission for a public hearing. You would make a motion, pass a motion, and make a recommendation to the council. And then the council would hold a hearing and they are the decision authority. So. Okay, anyway. Next page is non-conforming uses. And, uh, we've talked before about the one, the goals and sizes at the bottom of page forty-three. So I'm moving on to ADU's and we had some changes that we already talked about and already reached consensus on. And uh, page forty-eight has some additions to the list of architectural features that a developer would be able to use. And so with that, then page forty-nine is the staff recommendation, basically to do what we've been doing, go through and discuss. Uh, just in terms of the steps and the procedure, the notice to DLCD has been sent to them. And so with that process, they have what they have, and anybody that subscribes to their system uh, was notified, I guess the next day that the proposed amendments were submitted, that Lafayette has submitted proposed housing amendments. So that was some friends, the housing, Fair Housing Council of Oregon, the state housing, well, not housing authority, but housing somewhere other, uh, housing department. Don't, I'm not up with all my bureaucratic names for the state departments, but there are some folks out there that would definitely be interested and will no doubt contact me, because I'm the contact person that send the material submitted to DLCD, and they will ask for a copy to see what we're really doing. That doesn't stop us from making changes tonight or leading up and in the hearing, based on testimony, the commission may want to make some changes or just based on your own opinions might say, hey, yeah, we discussed this in December, but I want to do whatever about section whatever. So all of that can happen, but the January public hearing. If you are of a mind to, you could continue the hearing, the January hearing to your meeting in February. Right now, the schedule is planning commission hearing in January, city council hearing in February. And then they would, you know, have an ordinance and eventually pass it thirty days later, the ordinance would be effective. But the planning commission hearing in January, you're not comfortable, then you can say, let's continue this and have more information brought in or whatever need be done. And then you would have your continued hearing in February. That would push the city council hearing to March. And even at the city council level, they may say, gosh, this is a bunch. And they hold a hearing and say, yep, we want to continue this to the, the next month. So. Anyway, I just want to make sure you understand you're not looking at a concrete wall or the stone wall that's not movable. There's still changes that can be made and more discussion that can be had. More discussion that can be had.
Depending upon what other factors turn up, even if we are relatively comfortable where things that we might have things that come up. Fair enough. Okay. Yeah, so I guess that will include our housing amendments for tonight and.
Yeah, just kind of as a summary, the things that we were talking about in terms of changing, I'll go ahead and.
Okay.
Get those in the Word file so that we can. Uh, have that ready to go for the hearing and I will turn those changes into DLCD. Because it's, I don't know how many changes there are, but because changes happen through the public hearing process. Then local governments are expected to let DLCD know and then all the people that subscribe to their service. Can also know is depending on some of these changes, it might be that some party or another that's. Johnny on the spot has already read through this and said, oh, my gosh, this is not right. That's not good, blah, blah, blah. Then when the changed gets to DLCD and those people read that. They'll say, oh, okay, they caught that one. I don't have to worry about that. So. A lot can happen, even though the hearings are scheduled and. The process is underway.
Because we have a hearing in January for the housing.
Yeah, January sixteen, the third Thursday of the.
Now, uh, with the floodplain overlay district. Model ordinance, et cetera.
And that also is scheduled for hearing.
So that's scheduled for hearing. So, okay, so then we will. Begin with the markup and then you go from there. Collect me if I'm wrong, but even though there's, there's gonna be a lot of stuff in here that it's. It's driven by federal requirements and it's more about, it's more about informing us as opposed to anything.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, no, I guess we have the choice to make our own or adopt this. So this, we made that call.
And Jim kind of made the link.
Yep.
Before we get talking, I wanna hand out this photo, the.
A little photo for the record.
From the. We're not in a hearing, it's the work section. But, uh, this is from the FEMA. Uh, what is it? Flood map service center website, where anybody can go on that site, enter an address. And after a few seconds, a map will pop up with that address and you'll be able to see where the floodplain is. So in this.
Is there.
We're gonna turn it this way and north this up.
Would something like a link like that be available so that that could be. Incorporated in, incorporated in some ways of the public could get a hold of it. We've just, you've just commented on it here, right?
Yeah, I can have the call put the link of it.
Call put the link so that if somebody does want to go there, it gets incorporated in the meeting minutes so that, okay.
Yeah, so the purpose of this is to let you know that there isn't very much land in the floodplain. And there's only two people who have flood insurance policies in the city limits. So that, those two items combined with my having been the planner here for sixteen years, I guess it is. And there's never been a, uh, what's called a floodplain development permit submitted to build anything in the floodplain. And I'm not aware that there isn't anything in the floodplain. There might be, well, others than the, the goons. So anyway, uh, most of the regular folk living in town, property owners. They are thinking about floodplains. They're, they're not in.
Uh, man, it's, it's kind of encroaches in on it. You can see it right there.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, we, the footprint is in there, but is, is the rim, the buildings.
If there was a flood, it would be taken. It would be, yeah, it's. And for the interest of time and fairness, I know the council asks probably some questions you would. We are one of those. Um, we do have the floodplain insurance. And the only property that would really be affected unless we have a massive growth for the next forty years or so is gonna be the wastewater plant. So I really wanna focus on a lot of the stuff in here is really gonna be geared towards. Us having to do an assessment, et cetera. So.
Yeah, and what I'm kind of leading to, cause I wanted you to see that there isn't much land in the floodplains. And the land that is affected mostly is not in the city limits. I didn't bring the map, but there's seventeen, only seventeen properties on. All of these Henry Creek, Martin Creek, Milliken Creek, and the main stem of the Amhill. That are affected by the floodplain. And so if you're not in the floodplain. Then these, the current floodplain overlay district does not apply to your property and all these amendments don't apply. So the message is, I'm not intending on taking a lot of time with this because.
That council's kind of already decided because we were up against the, uh, December thirty first deadline. So they, so we did reverse, we went to council asking, hey, this is what we're looking at. We had a two long council items on it. There was some back and forth on federal oversight, federal encroachment, both, both, both good points. But at the end of the day, like I told the council and I'm telling you, we're literally the only property that is gonna have to do any assessment, pull permits, hire engineer. So this is, I mean, if anybody's pot books are gonna be affected, it's gonna be minimal because it's gonna be the city. So.
Yeah, a lot of the two floodplain policies. Flood hazard policies. If the city has one of those, then there's one other private property owner somewhere. That is worried enough about it to have flood insurance. So.
They did mention that person that, that owns that industrial lot did show up was the last meeting or meeting before, since they are beginning, so.
Yeah, and so the floodplain along that east side of the industrial zone property is. And there's a yellow line there, so that yellow line is the city limits. So even though the flood, the green or blue, whatever this color is, is kind of white running up Henry Creek. Uh, most of it is outside the city limits. We don't have to worry about any property outside the city limits. And so that industrial zoned land just has a thin little skiff. And it's probably, the land is generally up and you should go down to Henry Creek.
Yeah.
That little skiff is down.
Yeah, it won't be developed.
Maybe a third is halfway up, it's twelve.
But this is, is this down here? This is part of the industrial land is this? And that's.
Definitely incised.
That's definitely incised.
Yeah.
Also. So, so we're talking the wastewater treatment facility updates and if we want to expand that footprint either. In five to ten years or twenty to thirty, that'll be, that'll be something I'll have to come up with the invasive species protections and the floodplain and everything. So. That'll be a whole.
Yes, yeah, and that's the floodplain of the Amhill, not the floodplain of Henry Creek.
Yep.
And the Amhill River, uh, certainly, well, not so much up the North Fork. Cause that isn't a real big drainage area, but up the South Fork, it's a decent sized drainage area because. We, South Fork runs clear up past, uh, the, uh, casino. And so you get a whole bunch of rain and the classic Willamette Valley flood situation is. You get a bunch of rain, saturates the soil, then you get cold weather, freezes. And then you get snow on top of that. And then like in February of ninety six, in the Tuolumne Basin, apparently it wasn't as bad in this basin. But in the Tuolumne Basin, then they, they had like four, five, six feet of snow up in the coast range. In the upper reaches of the Tuolumne Basin. So you get then a pineapple express, you've got a lot of snow and rain on it. The snow is melting, the rain's coming down, the ground is frozen solid and it's saturated anyway. And so all the water runs off, there's no place for it to soak into. And then, so there is that that would be coming down, particularly the South Amhill River. But upstream from Lafayette, there is a lot of low lying agricultural land that fills up. So a lot of that floodwater, floodwater. Okay, floods farm fields. And so down here, I'm not sure what things were looking like on this stretch of the Amhill in February of ninety six. But I know even the Willamette was up. And there isn't much of a change in elevation between here and the confluence of the Amhill main stem with the Willamette. So as the Willamette comes up ten, fifteen, twenty feet, whatever it does. The Amhill just can't drain anymore. So the water just backs up. And, uh, so anyway, that's, you know, what the hundred year flood looks like. Not much land is affected. And given how little development, like no development in the past sixteen years. A lot of these proposed amendments aren't likely going to be anything that. I as the city planner and the floodplain administrator will have to deal with. But anyway, so the two, the little two page step report. Uh, expanded to, to the bottom of page one, uh, the council selected the. Model ordinance option on November fourteen. That was after a discussion that night and after another discussion the previous, previous month on October ten. And then the existing standards, which is kind of as a reminder that the normal process is. The National Flood Insurance Program was passed in nineteen sixty eight. And if a city or county wanted to participate in it, then the quid pro quo is. People in your city can get flood insurance through the federal program. But you have to have standards like the federal standard is build the main floor. At or above the hundred year flood height. Well, a lot of people just building at the height of the hundred year flood, well, good heavens, that doesn't make a lot of sense. But that's the way Congress reached consensus to get the bill passed. And then, uh, must be thirty years ago now, Oregon said, yeah, that doesn't make sense. We're raising it statewide so that the level of a floor. Of a building built in the floodplain has to be one foot above the height of the water during a hundred year flood. And as we know, from the last twenty years of national news stories. About places getting flooded out, the most recent was in western North Carolina. Where Hurricane Helene came through, they hadn't heard, they hadn't had a hurricane in. I don't know how many, a hundred years or something, and the last one they had wasn't very bad, but. It appeared to me from the news reports that all of western North Carolina. Just got hit hard with landslides and flooding and terrible stuff. So. Uh, everywhere in the country is having that. And so they had probably a five hundred year flood. Well, if you build one foot above the hundred year flood, that's not gonna help you in a five hundred year flood. You're gonna be flooded out. So anyway, uh, there, there is this national flood insurance program and it's all tied to this. Dreamed up, if you will, hundred year flood height. And to establish that, at least here in Yamhill County and for the ten cities in Yamhill County. They, uh, studied given technology that was available back then. The tree cover, the forest cover, the impervious surface areas in the drainage basin of the Amhill River. And then they took a look at the weather and how much snow and temperatures and all that kind of crud. They threw it all into their computer, the proverbial black box and out popped an elevation. In the case of cities, each city. And, uh, at the upper stream, upper end of Lafayette, the hundred year flood height is whatever. But because water flows downhill, by the time you're getting out of town. Then the hundred year flood height might, up here might be, oh, I don't know, a hundred and ninety. And down here, it might be a hundred and eighty nine and a half. So it's not just one flood height for the whole town because water runs downhill. So anyway. Uh, there's a few other things in here and, uh, basically it's talking about what I've mentioned before. The creeks are deeply incised, even the river is incised. And so as the water comes up, it doesn't spread out, it's contained by relatively steep slopes of the channel. Although on the south side of the river, right here by downtown, it's agricultural land and so. It's a steep slope on our side. But it's not so steep and it doesn't go up that far on the south side. So anyway, uh, the next page, uh, halfway down page two, the model ordinance adoption. It just goes through some things there and. Even though the letter came out in mid-July to each of the two hundred and thirty three cities and thirty one counties that are affected by this. Uh, they didn't. As part of their pretty big effort to inform everybody and let them know what's going on. Uh, the model ordinance wasn't available until, I guess it was August or September sometime. And then since then, they had a revision to the model ordinance. And so I still need yet to look at that and see what it's gonna do in terms of. Requiring changes to what we're looking at tonight. Anyway, yeah. Uh, so, and in my guess, your, your packet, is the next thing? A copy of the fifteen floodplain overlay district?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so we're not gonna look at that much other than it's there for you to have and. You can read through it, but because it hasn't been updated for at least. As long as I've been the city planner. And it isn't, it wasn't, it hasn't been updated for DLCD's model code in two thousand and twelve or something like that. And then they had another updated model code in twenty twenty. And our local floodplain overlay district was not updated to be consistent with that. And FEMA Region Ten's. Model ordinance is based on DLCD's twenty twenty. So there's a whole lot of changes and. I think what I, or what I was intending on doing is, is getting out here to page six in the. Model ordinance language.
So the markup was striking.
Yeah, there's a, some blueprinting that kind of goes through basic stuff and a list of. Acronyms or abbreviations. And so when you get into the model ordinance language itself, page six, right off of that. Statutory authorization findings of fact, it's like, no, we don't need any of that. Because this isn't a standalone ordinance part, it's part of the whole development. Uh, zoning ordinance. And in that bigger ordinance, it already has statutory stuff and. Findings of fact or in a staff report from a long time ago. So a lot of this is renumbering. So that the current numbering system in our floodplain overlay district. Gets relettered and renumbered to match up with the format of the model ordinance. The yellow language is. Uh, new stuff that is being added to DLCD's model. Uh, at the bottom of page six, one of the purposes is to preserve natural and beneficial floodplain functions. Well, that's directly out of this lawsuit that FEMA Region Ten in Oregon got caught up in. And so we're looking at preserving, protecting, whatever the natural. Floodplain functions and other beneficial floodplain functions. Bottom of, uh, page seven, it's a particular note here. Well, in yellow, employing a standard of no net loss of natural and beneficial floodplain functions. So the no net loss means you're gonna build something in the floodplain. And I don't know, let's say you wanted to fill it up, get it up higher. Oh, so you've just taken. Oh, so you've just taken out, I don't know what fifty cubic yards of floodplain function. Those fifty cubic yards, that's quite a bit, but anyway, just to use that as an example. When the floodwater comes up and spills over, oops. Fifty cubic yards of flood storage isn't there anymore. And when you have that happening in every city on the south of Yamhill. And McMinville just upstream, by the time the floodwater down here is running by Lafayette. How many cubic feet, cubic yards, even an acre, how many acre feet of storage that used to be there isn't there anymore? So. No net loss is the basic standard. There's some uh, new definitions in yellow. Several, as a matter of fact. One of them on page twelve is the riparian bunker zone. And based on the two thousand sixteen biological opinion. Uh, they have a setback of a hundred and seventy feet from the, what is it, media. Medium high water. In the stream anyway, luckily, because our streams are with steep slopes. As they come up, whatever that median height is. Then you go a hundred and seventy feet. And because the slope is going up. And the floodplain itself stops at a certain point. And so you try to run out a hundred and seventy feet. Well, up at the top here, it's all high ground. It's not in the floodplain anymore. To find the floodplain, you have to go back down here. Oh, here's the floodplain. Well, a hundred and seventy feet only applies in the floodplain. The technical term is the special flood hazard area. So this isn't an automatic hundred and seventy feet from all three creeks and the Yamhill main stem. It's uh, like in Sheridan. Because they have the river going through the middle of town and there's no steep banks like here. A whole lot of the town gets, is in the hundred year floodplain. And so that hundred and seventy foot is in the floodplain and. There, I don't know how they're going to deal with it, but a lot of other cities have that same thing. And I, I, one of our plan, I used to be the Sheridan City Planner. And I'm just continually thinking, God, how would that work? So the new planner, who's a cog planner, I'll keep checking in with him to see how. It plays out when you have a really wide floodplain that is shallow.
Got a ton of development right on the river edge.
So anyway, uh, continuing on. And I'm going through pretty quick. Uh, on page twenty two. At the bottom, there's a nature section. And it's uh. Two point one one, two point oh five. So oh five is the flood hazard reduction standards. And so that's where you have some specific standards for alteration of water courses. Anchoring buildings, construction materials and methods, utilities and equipment. It's, this flood program is really quite an all encompassing program. Uh, page twenty four is tanks, whether they're in ground or above ground. If they're in ground, okay, then they're in the ground. But when everything's saturated, depending on what it is and what's in it, those tanks can pop right up. So they have to be anchored. And then if they're above ground. You don't want them sitting where they would be flooded and float up. So if you're going to have them above, you know, where the floodwaters would be spreading out. You'd want them on some kind of a foundation thing and strapped down anyway. Because yeah, it's a hundred year flood, but if you get a two, three, four, five hundred year flood, you don't want that thing coming off its cradle and going downstream. Anyway, uh, and then subdivisions and other developments. And a little blurb on page twenty five about the use of other base flood elevation data. Luckily, the flood insurance study from nineteen eighty eight that was done for Yamhill County and all the ten cities in the county. It has base flood elevations in it. So even though we won't have to deal with it, I have no clue what land might be added to the U P B in the future. And so it's in here, even though we won't need to deal with it. Uh, there's some other things, structures located in multiple or partial flood zones. I won't go into the details of that. And then on page twenty six is kind of the next big set of open standards. It's two point one one, two oh six. And then that covers flood openings. When you build a building and the floor is up one foot above, then you've got a crawl space. You have to have flood openings, at least two of them to let the water in. Then when the water moves down, let the water out. And the number of square inches of flood openings is one square inch of flood opening for every square foot that's imposed by the foundation. So it's a nice one to one. I don't know if that really works in the real world, but it's what the standard is, so. Well, the opening, garages. Um, so many houses have garages and they're often attached. The floor of the house has to be one foot above, but the floor of the garage does not. It can be at great, but the garage can only be used for parking cars. Or having an access into the house. You cannot use it as a man cave or anything like that. If you do and it gets flooded. The National Flood Insurance Program will not pay you for the damage to your man cave in the garage. And some people have freezers and washers and dryers and all of that stuff. So all of that needs to be raised up so that it's one foot above if it is in the garage. Uh, there's then other things before, so yeah, before regulatory floodway. Residential construction, non residential construction, there's stuff for manufactured dwellings. And we're finally getting to equipment or accessory structures. There's some language about that. Then there's floodways. On the air photo I handed out, there's some kind of ready pinkish diagonal lines. That is the floodway and that's where during a flood, the fastest moving water with the greatest. Potential for damage is theoretically according to the map anyway. And so you don't really want anything in the floodway. And so if there is to be something in the floodway, then you have to have a civil engineer. Get some software from FEMA Region Ten and enter a bunch of data and then have the. Software pop out showing that whatever you're doing in the floodway will not result in any increase in the height of the water during a hundred year flood. Zero rise is the goal. So. At the end here, uh, there's.
We just have to put city, kind of like how we have Lafayette, we just need to make sure we put city on those.
Oh, yeah, I thought I kind of like, you know, I guess I did.
I had to get, I just noticed that, but that's only two.
Yeah, anyway, uh. So at the bottom of page thirty three, there's another kind of a big section. Oh, seven standards for protection of special flood hazard area floodplain functions. This is all new for the Endangered Species Act stuff. And so to protect and save the floodplain functions. Then you don't want filling and if you do have filling, then you got to mitigate that. You don't want impervious surfaces, that doesn't allow infiltration, but if you get it, you got to mitigate it. If you're cutting down trees and in this, it's trees that are greater than six inches diameter at breast height. Then cut down trees. Oh, you got to mitigate that. And so uh, luckily, our floodplains are pretty narrow. And where they do occur, they're generally on steep slopes. And we won't have any development there presumably.
They talk about trees and things. Yeah, that was the only thing I could think of that would come in, like we talked about the river project, right, Brandon? And if they were going to develop any, anything down to the waterfront, then we would run into probably this disloism of vegetation could become an issue.
Yeah. So anyway, these last three pages have all yellow because it's all new. Uh, trees and stormwater management. And uh, it all gets to the point of no net loss of certain functions. So it would be best if you think you want to cut a tree down as part of your development, don't. But if the tree is right in the middle of whatever and the building has to go there, then cut it down, but you have to mitigate it.
Yes.
And so the table on page thirty eight is no net loss standards. I guess you could call it a mitigation table. But if you do something and it's only a little something, you only have to mitigate one to one. But if you do something that's major something like cut down fifty trees that are all greater than six inches in diameter. Then you'd have to plant like, oh, whatever it is, several trees, six to one. Plant six for everyone you cut down. So. Anyway, that's a quickie thing and there isn't much discussion to be had. And I'm sorry, it had to listen to me for another, whatever it's been, twenty minutes or something. But that, this will be. A public hearing in January sixteen meeting. And if for some reason a bunch of people go up thinking they might be in the floodplain and. Demand, for example, that you not take a vote and make a recommendation to the council because they want to come back and talk to you some more in February. Then you can continue the hearing. Or you can, can tell them, looking at the map, your house isn't in the floodplain, it's nowhere near it. Call your jets and we're not going to continue our hearing to next month like you want.
One question I have, we got two of them coming up, um, with deadlines on them. Is there any consideration of the precedence that we should take these in in January? Like if we can't get through both of them, we want to make sure we get through one or the other.
I wouldn't worry about it. Um, for example, the bill that said you got to allow duplexes on a lot. And residential law that allows people family dwellings, that's effective because of January. And like all things that are either a state law or a federal law that haven't shown up in the local regulations yet. You have to follow the state law. So on January second, I guess it's the first working day. If somebody comes in and says, I'm ready to submit a building permit to put a duplex on a house. They're on a vacant lot in the R one zone. It's seven thousand five hundred square feet, meet the minimum lot size, et cetera. Then the city would say. Yeah, our code doesn't allow that, but we here Lafayette are up to date. We know that the bill's been passed, that the law is effective. And so the city and the county, or I guess the city uses Newburgh. So both the city here would process the building permit and Newburgh building code people would review it and somebody could. Be done with the new duplex before we get our regulations actually adopted, the ordinance passed in the thirty day effective period.
So I guess to the point, would it be better to put that on the agenda first so that we can make sure we get through it? Whereas the flood thing's not going to affect people trying to build something right now. And if we had two of them, we wanted to make sure we got through one of them.
Yeah, we could do that. It's the likelihood of any development in the flood coming in, the floodplain is so low that if we do. Uh, like tonight, put the housing amendments as the agenda item preceding the floodplain amendments.
It may be prudent enough to list them both and then give the option to the chair.
I would, yeah, I would, I would list them both. That we anticipate having a public hearing on both. Maybe even put a little comment on for the floodplain overlay that they would, the public hearing may be held, but. Or some effect that the public hearing maybe. Continue or just whatever, if you want, so that they know that they're both on level, but we will definitely are going to go like the one and try to complete the one. And then the other one maybe doesn't do nothing more than get the other one. We open the hearing and then we continue.
Yeah, because it's been, because both of these hearings have been noticed to D L C D. And shortly we will have, they notice that goes in the newspaper. Uh, then because they have been and will be doubly noticed. The hearing will have to be opened and if there isn't enough time, like if it's already nine o'clock or something. Then you open the hearing and just continue it to the next day or the next meeting date.
So if something happens that we don't get through the housing amendments for whatever reason. And it looks like we're going to need to continue them, we then continue them, move on to the floodplain overlay with the idea we started. We open the hearing on it and continue it as well. Yes.
I would advise though, as we're talking February. Um. Counsel, counsel may have known at the last minute that if anything were to happen for the plan, because so we're going to have that, that joint session in February. There's a good chance that we're going to have something coming to, to, to decide in February regarding rezoning or whatever. Counsel has requested you start your meeting before six thirty. Okay, so I know it's hard for you to get here at six thirty, but we may have to have chair open it up if it's five thirty or, or six o'clock meeting. Um, but um, the way they had mentioned it, I meant, well, we can open up the meeting at six thirty. And you know, but I think just hearing the conversations from the, from the members of the governing body. If there's anything coming to the, to the planning commission, I will get with you all next month to set an earlier time if it's five thirty.
Yeah, so you're talking about quasi judicial thing.
Yes, yes.
Like a zone change.
Yes, we, we may have something come.
And that's a February meeting.
Yes, and so I will let you know next month because I would actually officially ask, because it's not, it's not like canceling a meeting, which I can do because we have no agenda. We're formally changing the time. So I want to make sure that we would at least note, take that to the next meeting, but Jim and I should know or Nicole based on applications. So, um.
And I, I did mention the one zone change, but we have a second one also. And it's involving the C one, C two district also. And I've said incomplete letters with a determination that both of them are incomplete. So depending on how soon they get the stuff in. Uh, and just so you know, due process. State law says, once the letter goes out determining that the application is incomplete. The applicant has three options. One is turning in all the stuff that the letter says needs to be turned in. If it's missing, well, get it in. Once it's in, then you go on with the process. Or some of the information, of the two, some of the information can be turned in. And then in their information, they say, and we're not turning in anymore. Okay, then you continue with the process. Or the third option is they'd send an email back or a letter or whatever saying, we're not turning anything in. Go with what you got, even if you've determined it's incomplete. What do you think is good enough? And so then the process would continue. And for the first two options where they're going to turn stuff in. They have a hundred and eighty days from the date they turned their application in. To get the additional material in. So that's six months. So and if I don't hear from one or both of them. Well, now, yeah, I could send them an email kind of as a reminder saying, which are you thinking you might do? Are you working on it? And if they refuse to answer it or something, or just don't want to answer. Then the letter that determined their applications were incomplete talks about the hundred and eighty days. And it says what day of the year that is the hundred and eightieth day. On the hundred and eighty first day, by action of state law, the application is void. So if they just ignore it or say, oh, I'll get to it, I've got six months. And then all of a sudden, the six months is up, they forgot they intended. Well, okay, then they can just start over again and get whatever new information and turn in a brand new application. Get whatever new information and turn in a brand new application. So an awful lot of procedural stuff, just kind of floating around in the background and often it doesn't come into play. I doubt that the hundred and eighty day period, for example, will come into play if they're intending on turning in stuff. They're gonna let me know pretty soon that they intend on turning it in and turning whatever it is. Or option three, they'll tell me, screw it, I'm not turning anything in, go ahead and process it.
Okay, so we kind of have an idea of what the future looks like a little bit, so that kind of addresses the new business.
I got two more quick things, yeah, two more quick things, I know we're trying to get out here. Um starting, um so there's been some new public meeting law stuff that's been going on for two things that will be imperative to you all and your role. Um I'm gonna, we're gonna collect them yearly, Kennedy is, via Nicole or whoever, um. Anything you make a note of in this, in the meeting, on paper, would you write it, hold on to it? And at the end of year, so next December, next December's meeting, you're gonna turn in everything you've had. So if you don't write on anything, you don't gotta keep nothing, you don't do nothing, you don't gotta keep nothing. Um but if you write on something, even if it's a little star or a smiley face, you gotta keep it. And we gotta, and we gotta make sure we follow that away.
What if I do everything on the iPad electronically, which I usually do, if I'm taking notes or whatever.
You'll be okay, as long as it's related, but if somebody were to ask. You have to turn over that, and so I would save the document.
Save it, which I do.
Yes, um and then.
And maybe provide his electronic card, maybe provide him a complete electronic card.
Yeah, and then so, yeah, so if you do that electronically or whatever, hey, this is what I, I made a couple notes on an agenda that I had and we just hold on to them. And then David, our city attorney, did confirm the new O G E C ethics training. He would like you all to do. It's once a term, so I think with planning commission, it's four years. So within the next four years, preferably sooner, because you all have to fill out the S C C filings once a year. Talk about all the millions that we have and all the, all the things that we do, um. It's about a two hour class, two and a half hour class, you can do it online. At work or whatever, um it's pretty good, talks about public meeting law, talks about ethics, et cetera. And if you all decide to become counselors later on or an appointment happens and a seat filled, you already have that laid out. Or so you'll at least have the public meeting ethics side of that, if you decide to make that next step, if that were to be one of your things.
Thank you so kind as to send a link around for us.
Yes, I'll, I'll do that Monday morning.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Kenny, uh old business.
Uh just to remind, earlier in the meeting, I talked about the nonconforming situation.
Yes.
That that whole business, the nonconforming use decision was made, the site development review decision was made. But those are still floating, deadline is February sixth. And now we've got this zone change that's been submitted. And so whatever happens with all that, it's still in flux, I guess you could say. It's not done done because the deadline has, the extended deadline has not yet occurred.
So we may see something in the future, depending upon what else.
Yeah, yeah, when I send a letter, uh attach a letter that's the incomplete determination. In the email, I say, you know, this is what it is and this is that and everything. Well, for the one for Lafayette Auto Body, I had just a couple of the kind of standard things that I say. And then I had like five more items about. Just be aware that because you've applied for a zone change, it doesn't mean that that deadline goes away. The deadline's not paused, it's not extended, it's a hard and fast thing. And on that date, if you don't have a building permit and you haven't started construction. I E pushing dirt on the side, then the nonconforming use decision goes away. And that's what allowed up to forty two hundred square feet of nonconformity to happen. Then the site development review decision also goes away because it cannot legally approve something. That was allowed by this and when this goes away. And the site development review members away. So.
Yeah.
We may have, well, that's what we will have out of the situation.
Fair enough. Okay, uh commissioner comments, anybody have anything really important they need to say or want to say?
Have a great holiday, everybody, have a great new year.
Well, thank you very much, you too, Brandon, appreciate it, wish you all the health.
And the solstice, I think it's just, it's Saturday already. So you know, by the time Christmas comes, the days are getting longer already.
Looks like next meeting, January sixteenth, we have two things on the agenda, we know of. February twentieth, we have a short work session on the Parks Master Plan, that'll be coming up. Uh February meeting, sounds like, yes, we'll need to open it early. We will have that, more to follow next meeting. Uh do I have a motion to adjourn, we need to know.
Sure, I'll move to adjourn.
Commissioner Chair Kirk.
Hi.
Commissioner Vice Chair Belding.
Hi.
Commissioner Mioli.
Hi.
Mr. Rogers.
Hi.
Mr. Adamson.
Hi.
Commissioner Webb.
Hi.